Evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a planning and zoning brought of appeals, December 13, 2023, special meeting. Roll call, please.
Chairman Kempa.
Here.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Here.
Commissioner Patel. Commissioner Seaworth, here. Commissioner Rigel. Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
And Commissioner Mieszewski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Perfect. All right, we've got some.
I hear someone, hold on. There's someone on the stairs.
It's gotta be you.
And. And roll call, roll call. Commissioner Rigel.
I'm here.
All right, just in time to approve some meeting minutes. We've got two today to approve. The first one is a zoning review workshop that took place May 17 of 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes as presented?
I just have one small correction on the first page, Agenda 2E. I think it's supposed to be case law defines.
Yep.
How zoning is used.
Spelling error.
Yep.
That's all.
Okay.
What do you think, guys?
Okay, what's right.
Any other comments? If there are none, can I please have a motion to approve the zoning review workshop from May 17, 2023, as noted?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The second set of minutes is from the October 26, 2023, regular PCBA meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If there are none, can I please have a motion to approve the PCBA minutes from October 26, 2023?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, Scott. All right. Our old business, our one and only case for new business is a PCBA case number 23-17SU. It's a public hearing. The applicants are Bevin and Nikunj Patel at 1311 East Rand Road, Unit A, Arlington Heights. The applicant is seeking a special use permit for a sit-down restaurant. Can I please have a motion to open case number 23-17SU?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just for the record, that's 1313, Unit A, correct?
I still missed it.
It was a typo on my part. Thank you very much.
All right. Can we have a brief description from you?
Yes. This evening, Mr. Patel, Bevin, Nikunj are here to present a request for a special use for a sit-down restaurant. They also are the owners of the property at 1307 through 1313 North Rand Road in Arlington Heights. This is approximately 2,000 square or 2,100 square foot vacant retail space. Parking is compliant, and they're here to seek a sit-down restaurant. They have indicated no alcohol, no gaming, that they want to go forward with the restaurant. The applicants are here this evening.
Okay. Can I swear you in before your testimony?
Yes.
And if you want to, you could get sworn in also if you wish to speak. Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. We could have the applicant come up to the podium and tell us about your.
I'd like to get that up on the screen.
Patrick, can you put the computer on the screen?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, everyone, for being here and making up the time. Christmas is like 10 days away, so it means a lot to be here. Also, thank you for giving us an opportunity to come here and present our case. We're looking to open a peri-peri restaurant at our 1313A space. Like Dan mentioned, that we're also the owners of the place. What our intention is with the place is we want to have a dine-in, a full dine-in restaurant with a proper kitchen and everything. So it's peri-peri, is the food that we're looking to open. The franchise is called Vasco's Peri-Peri. The thing about peri-peri is that, I'm not sure if you have the menu, but we can give you the menu, so you can look at the different food options we have.
Oh, I thought you were going to give us samples.
Oh, I wish we could. So peri-peri is a Portuguese food. It's actually, peri-peri is an African word for chili, and it's used in sauce, different flavors of sauces. As you can see, there are different, we offer seven different flavors of sauce, from the mild, very mild sauce, which is plain sauce, to for the adventure seekers, dynamite, which I tried, and it wasn't bad, it was fun. However, what we're intending to do is we want to offer a food place for everyone, for family to have a dinner spot, for someone to take their spouses on a date, little date, or for teens to go have, I mean, school is right there, Hershey High School is right behind us, and we want to offer them a different variety of food. What differentiates us from other food places is that this is grilled and it's steamed, so it's not fried, so it's a healthier option for those seeking a healthy menu. The sauces that we offer also are vegan sauces, so as the trend is going towards more, becoming more vegan, we're offering that. With different food options that we are offering, we have Mogo fries. Mogo is, it's a vegetable, not exactly like potato, but the fries is made from there. So it's a bit different than the regular fries. It comes with different seasoning. We offer pita, fofol. Of course, we offer a different chicken, boneless chicken and regular chicken. We offer wraps, bowls, so we have a pretty extensive menu here. It's not just 10 items and be done with it. We have something for, something to please everyone, from young kids to adults and healthy, healthy folks also. Any questions?
I must say, I did my homework today. I had lunch at your Schaumburg facility.
How'd you like it?
And it's delicious. It is, just like explained, it's perfect.
Good. Well, I hope everyone gets a chance to try it out.
You really have to sign a waiver to try the dynamite?
Oh, I see that. The waiver's required. Choose your heat and get ready to eat.
You want to go to the floor plan or the photos, what do you want to go to next?
Yeah, so we can show the kitchen that we have, we're looking to have. So these photos are actually from the existing restaurant, which is in Schaumburg, but our place will be a replica of what we have here. Because it's a franchise, everything is intended to be same or similar. So we'll have a five feet of grill, and then we have a steamer there. We do have a fryer there for fofol, and then, as you can see over there. Yes, and then, of course, refrigerators for commercial use.
So this will be the second location, or are there more? Third?
So I'm Samir Ajmeri, founder of Vasco's Peri-Peri.
He's our partner.
And I'm a friend.
He swore it, but I didn't.
Yeah, but we would then get names, yes.
Okay, my name is Samir, Samir Ajmeri. Good evening, everyone.
Could you spell that for the record, please?
Oh, yeah, sure. What was that?
Could you spell your name for the record?
Yeah, sure. S.A.M.I.R., Samir Ajmeri.
Got it.
Got it?
And you were with Vasco's Peri-Peri?
That's right. So it's me who brought, this is my baby, from South Africa. So it's a little bit history of back in South Africa, for Portuguese culture back in South Africa, and that's how the colonies were there, and the cultural exchange came up, and that's where the born of Vasco's came. And I believe you guys must have heard about the Nando's Peri-Peri. They have about 1,300 stores around the world. They have 12 stores here in Chicago, Illinois also. And we have this launch in 2020 December in COVID, we did pretty good. Our second location is coming up on a 440 East Roosevelt Road Lombard, which is under construction right now, and this will be the third location, basically. And we are trying to build more around Illinois. So it's a good food, healthy food, as the young man mentioned, you know? So, and thank you so much for trying out the food today, and we want to welcome all of you. And I believe you did, read the proposal in the past, we brought it. So Vasco's Peri-Peri is coming up with the proposal of, not a proposal, Vasco's Care Day. So every month on a Tuesday, we'll be working with the nonprofit organizations from the community around. So Schaumburg has already started, so 9th of January, that's the first day of 2024, that's our resolution. We call it, there's something needs to be given back to the community itself. So, yeah, that's us.
You mentioned that you have about 10 to 12 staff.
Yes.
About how many people can you actually serve in your restaurant, or at the bar area and also at the table?
So we won't be having a bar?
Well, the counter, I mean. So you.
There's no.
Oh, it's a service counter you can't sit down at?
It's a fast casual, you can sit down too.
Oh, you can?
You can.
So total, how many people can you serve in your restaurant?
Around 45 to 46 sitters.
And what hours of operation are you thinking?
So generally, our standard procedure operations will be 11 o'clock in a day from Monday to Friday, I mean, Monday to Thursday, 11 to 10, Friday, Saturday, 11 to 11, and Sunday,
How long have you been in the restaurant at Schaumburg?
Schaumburg, third year. We're going to celebrate next, we come up a birthday, anniversary, third anniversary.
2020.
2020, yes.
Sounds good.
Thank you. We're looking forward to seeing you guys at the restaurant, too. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your testimony. Any questions from any of the commissioners to the applicant? There are no questions that I, thank you very much, Mr. Tom. There are no more questions, can I please have a motion to close case number 23-17SU at 7:12 PM?
I'll make the motion.
Second, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I have a question for Director Peterson. You mentioned about the parking lot being in need of maintenance and striping. Do you feel that that should be a condition of the motion? We've done that in the past and tied that together.
They've done a little bit of maintenance since the, at the last application that was in. Remember when they had the applicant for Fortunes Cafe? They did some striping, they did some pothole repairs, they did get rid of the signage that was there. So at this point in time, staff believes that they've got adequate parking to support it. They also have some areas in the back. Should parking become, additionally become necessary, they have room to add parking at the back of the mall. So at this time, they've met those previous conditions.
That surface in the back is in pretty rough shape. Is the applicant planning to maybe resurface that parking lot in the rear of the building?
In the near future, yes. We exactly don't know when, but that's the plan, yes.
Okay. I think we talked about this when we had the tattoo place open up, and so we would like to see that happen. There would be the parking, I went there today, and the parking in front of the building was limited, so with 45 people, I know the location in Schaumburg is, there is a lot of tables there. I was actually thinking that probably would probably sit like 70 people, that's what it looks like.
In Schaumburg?
Yeah, in Schaumburg. It looks like a big space. So this one might be smaller, but if word gets around, the food is good, you're going to have a lot of customers there.
We'll get it done, yes, in the back.
All right, thank you. Okay, if there are any other questions? No? If there are no other questions, can I please have a motion to add to the public record the evidence?
Excuse me, I was going to say, you can bring up the white cards, the proof of mailing, and the green cards, and thank you very much.
Do we need to label those and exhibit something?
No, that's in there.
Okay. All right. So can I please have a motion to accept into the public record the evidence presented this evening for case number 23-17SU?
I'll make the motion.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, can I please have a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number 23-17SU for at 1313 East Rand Road, Unit A, for a special use permit for a sit-down restaurant?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner DeGraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Rigel.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
All right. This case will be heard by city council on January 8 at 6:30 here, so I'll have the reports done before the holiday break, so they have it before, in time for the meeting, so.
When are you planning to open?
The next five to six months, depending on how long it takes to build up, build a place like. That's our plan, before summer, if things goes on.
Good.
Good luck.
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
Just a quick update, as we approved the minutes tonight for the zoning review workshop meeting from May, I've been working with, trying to get focus groups of users of the zoning code, and it's been a little tough getting the actual applicants participate. However, I do have commitments from the airport, Director Miller, and Economic Development Director Sekus, the ownership of Pabcor, the ownership of Prospect Crossing, the owners of Valley for U Mall, to talk about, come in and talk from a property owner's perspective of the zoning code. The Tuscan Associates, our consultants, have already done a preliminary outline identifying significant parts of the code that needs modernization, and also looking at some of the best practices that are in place in the zoning world right now, and have presented a preliminary report to the city. I've started the review of that. There will be a requirement for us to spend some time going over that as we move forward. The timeframe for us, from my perspective, to get this through the processes of amending and updating is this calendar year. So we'll be working on it at different meetings throughout the year.
2024.
The second item for business is we will be meeting Wednesday, January 24. We will be having a public meeting. It will not be a zoning public hearing, but as everyone's aware, with our half-acre lots, our animal control ordinance is very silent on chickens. And we have had, over the years, lots of urban farmers that have raised a lot of chickens, and there are no limitations on number of chickens, no limitations on whether you can have roosters or not, and we've had some complaints recently about the nuisance.
So we can feed the new restaurant, yes?
What?
We can feed the new restaurant.
Yeah, we're your suppliers.
Thank you.
Nice guy, sir. So it came to the city council back in October, the end of October, some residents wanted to ban, straight out ban, ownership of chickens, which I don't think that's where we need to go, but we do need to look at establishing some guidelines and rules. So because the committee is already, the zoning board plan commission is already there to address it, it was assigned to us to have the public input, public comment, and try and work through some rules for those folks wanting to keep chickens in their yards. We're very clear at animals that are prohibited. We're very clear at this acreage that's needed to have a horse or something else, but when it comes to chickens, as long as it, and the hard part is, yeah, we can file a nuisance complaint, but the police have to be called, then the police have to witness it, and how many times is the rooster going to cooperate?
How about horses, same breed?
Three acres, no, you got to have three acres for a horse. We only have two parcels in town that could accommodate that, neither one of them have horses right now.
Sheep?
Same thing. So that will be coming up in January. There will be no action, really any action, other than to have ability for the public to provide their feedback, their comments. We will have done some little research before then, and try and get a consensus to present to the council to amend the animal control section of the ordinance.
So is that something that Michael Blue of Tuscan is giving comments on?
It's not in the zoning code. If we want to add some things to the zoning code, this, all the restrictions for chickens falls in Title IX, which is under the police control, animal control under the police.
But isn't it a land use?
It can be, when, we do have rules on where their coops can go, the size of their coops, where in the yard, and the people who've come and got permits for coops have been complying, you know, five feet off the side yard line, 10 feet off the back, no more than 200 square feet, can't have foul odors, it can't have, be a mess, but there's nothing about the noise.
So is that 200 classified in an outdoor building?
It's looked at as an accessory structure. So that includes the run and the coop itself, so.
All right. Guys, thank you so much for the last to leave, but thank you once again for bringing us up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. We'll see you on January 8.
Yep.
And you'll get, I'll send you a notice.
Yes, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome, guys. Have a good night.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
So there are just a lot of moving parts, and it's been in the ordinance since the city became a city, and people have had chickens since the city was a city, so that was the beauty of having this rural half-acre lots community, but it, there are some folks that, we had one gentleman who had 24 of them.
Yikes.
And then he was letting them run free, free range, while the ordinance says you're supposed to control them. So it's gotten a little out of hand, and without any real clear cut guidelines, it's tough to go and enforce.
What about things like ducks? I mean, that's close to a chicken, is that?
Well, that could be all, become part and parcel of this, you know?
So, and you have to limit the number of roosters, because if anybody wants to stay a little more, so, a little longer, so it's going to be a problem, so it's.
The issue is, is you don't need a rooster to have eggs. So, but if you're going to raise them, then they want them, and sometimes when you buy chicks or have some hatch, you don't know what a rooster's a rooster until they start crowing. So that's coming forward. I don't know of any other applicants right now that have reached out to us for that meeting, so that, and again, we'll be acting as a place to hear the comments and kind of put an action plan together where we want to go with it. Other than that, some of our restaurants are doing very well right now, they'll come through here, and it seems like all our other applicants are happy with their projects, so.
Dan, I had a question. Somebody asked if I knew the building that went up at the Allstate property, if that's been leased and who is leasing it?
I do not know who the tenants are. We did not know who the tenants were going to be when the developer, Dermity, was still seeking us before we de-annexed the territory. I can do a little digging and find out, I'm sure. We do know that one of the users was supposed to be a large e-commerce, but no one had committed to who that was, whether it was Overstock, whether it was the Smiley Face, or whether it was one or the other.
Got it.
So we do not know the exact tenant yet.
What about that one where that gas explosion was? I see that's still all closed down over there, that one mall, is there a subway?
Ah, the 1200 North Elmhurst Road, there was an electrical fire in that building back at the end of July, and I met with the architects and the engineers on Thursday of last week. We met to discuss how they're going to comply with the new energy code requirements, which, yeah, it's a challenge, but we think we found a way where they don't have to rebuild the building or do major plumbing rework, because the way the sanitary main line through the building pick up all the bathrooms and the branches to go to the various kitchens, all are within the clearance range of if you were to insulate those rear brick walls. So how do you require someone to do an R13 wall, you know, which is not even what the energy code requires, now they require it in R21, even in all, and still be able to access those toilet rooms? And because they were all built with just brick walls, where those things were within, they had enough spacing with just a brick wall and meet all the spacing requirements of the plumbing code. Well, now, you put any type of a furred out wall in those places, and now the fixtures don't fit, and so we believe we found a mechanism to meet the intent of the energy code, where overall, the whole building will be more energy efficient than when it was when it was constructed, and still allow them some leeway in the toilet room areas. But if you read the strict letter of the energy code, they're supposed to be meeting as new construction in today's standards.
What kind of flooring do they have?
It's a slap.
It's a slider?
Yep.
Would it be cost prohibitive for them to relocate the toilet? Give it another foot?
You're.
Push it out?
I challenged the architect and said, you're going to probably have to open up the floor in a couple places, see if you, how deep that main is underneath the floor, see if you've got enough room to do an offset on there to get enough wall space, so that's kind of where we're at, but it would be significant cost to relocate that whole main that runs through the back of that building. That being said, we're expecting actual rebuilding permits, sort of drawings here, probably within the next three weeks. They also had hiccups because a lot of the tenants were underinsured and couldn't even afford to vacate the spaces.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, the ownership had given the tenants, because everything in the spaces is the tenants to get rid of, not the ownership, and they gave them until September, and three of the tenants did not get their stuff out until they were threatened with court action in October, end of October. So it's still been delayed a few times, but amazingly, the actual brick wall held up very well, the arrogant. They are going to be re-roofing the whole thing, because the steel took quite a bit of heat damage in that end of the wall. So. So that's where we are with that one. Anything else?
Anything else? Can I please have a motion to adjourn at seven thirty?
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for coming.